Hey friends, we're going to call this Celine City Council Work Meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Members present currently are myself, Mayor Marl, council members Dylan, Girbo, Rhodes, Tahar, and CEO. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, DPW Director Fordyce, City Superintendent, Engineer Rubel, and Attorney Smith. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, if you'd be so kind to sign in in the back to my left, we would appreciate it. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this work meeting with one discussion item consisting of the sale of Lot 19 in the Sauk Trail Business Park to Zippy's Auto Wash. Moved by CEO, was there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tahar. All those in favor of approving the agenda as distributed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Well, first of all, I would like to welcome our guests here this evening. It is a pleasure to accommodate you and to learn more about your interest in one of the lots in our Sauk Trail Business Park. I should remind council members that you received some material in your packet which would have been delivered on Friday, and then our petitioners have provided hard copies of the PowerPoint which I think they're going to present in just a few moments. So again, we want to welcome you. Actually, for your benefit, why don't we go around the table and introduce ourselves? I know you've met some of us before, but not all of us. Of course, you know me, I'm Mayor Marl.
I'm David Rhodes, Mayor Protim.
I'm Janet McClellan, City Council.
I'm Terry McLoughlin, City Council.
And we're expecting Councilwoman McLoughlin at any time as well, okay? So I guess with that, I'm going to turn it over to you. Mr. Campbell, do you want to provide some opening remarks, and then we'll turn it over to our guests?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a few weeks ago, Tony Caperisi, the city's realtor, made contact with me and to advise me that the Weavers had submitted a proposal for what I would guess called the new Lot 19, the portion after going forward for the proposal with the hotel and hardware store. So about two-thirds, three-quarters of the current Lot 19 for Zippy's, Zippy Auto Wash building facility. And so, we met staff, met along with Mayor Marl, Mayor Protim Rhodes, Councilman Tahar, and Tony, and we met and listened to their proposal. And so, what we have forth now is what they had proposed at that early on meeting, just to gather some initial thoughts and questions, concerns, those type of things so they could be better prepared to present here today. So unless there's any questions for me, be happy to turn it over to...
Let me add one more thing, just so that we're clear here. We have a regular council meeting beginning at 7:30, so you have plenty of time to present your proposal. Subsequent to your presentation, we'll work our way around the table and entertain any questions, concerns that council members have. There may be some outstanding questions and issues that need to be resolved, some information that may need to come back. So what I will propose, unless there's an objection, is that this would be added as a discussion item at our next council meeting, giving council members plenty of time to think about it, to be very thoughtful, and then we'd have a discussion, again, at our first meeting in October, and develop consensus on how best to proceed, if that seems appropriate to you. Excellent, okay. Well, if there's nothing further from the group, I will turn it over to our guests. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to come to present to council. I'm Corey Weaver, this is my wife Michelle Weaver, we're co-owners, operators of Zippy Auto Wash. We operate the one on Ellsworth Road as well as Zeeb Road, so to give you some context on the business. So, we do have a packet prepared, it's essentially a summary of the presentation that we'll go through, as well as the original letter of intent, some concept renderings, as well as the proposed site. So, look forward to any questions that you might have, feel free to interject at any point, and we look forward to working with the city on developing the Lot 19, the new Lot 19. So, I propose that we go through the presentation, feel free to interject with any questions, and we'll be happy to answer as best we can.
Do you want to make sure that microphone is on?
Sure, yep, looks like it is, great.
You're welcome to stay up there.
Okay, very good. So, brief agenda, who we are, why we're here. I really wanted to touch on the Zippy Auto Wash priorities, we think they're important to highlight and distinguish, you know, our contribution to the community. A summary of the proposal, as well as the letter of intent, then we'll open it up for questions at that point. Feel free to interject at any point, of course, also. So, my wife and I, Michelle, are local Celine residents. We lived in Celine for a number of years, lived in the greater Ann Arbor area for over 20 years. We have two little boys, ages six and nine. We frequent local businesses, we support local government, and donate generously to local nonprofit organizations. Really enjoy living in Celine, and really looking forward to serving its residents and our neighbors, hopefully with a Zippy on Lot 19. We're here to request your consideration of our letter of intent, which was included in the packet, to purchase the 4.32 acres, essentially the remaining acreage of Lot 19 adjacent to the expanded Lot 18. Looking forward to serving the Celine community with the highest quality auto wash services that hopefully you've had a chance to experience at one of our locations already. And we believe that the Sauk Trail Business Park is an ideal location for us to provide those services. Sauk Trail provides excellent exposure on US 12, excellent access to US 12. It's in a established retail corridor, and we believe that we'll find many customers along that corridor and be able to offer the highest quality services to those customers. We have, I should note, made a number of attempts previously along the Michigan Avenue corridor. We went through three complete purchase agreements and three site plans with Pittsfield Township near the state and Michigan intersection, near Walmart. Each one of those, at some point in the process, encountered either some engineering or planning challenges and was unable to move forward. We are looking at an alternate location in Pittsfield Township along the Michigan Avenue corridor also. That site plan isn't moving as fast as we'd like, and we believe that the Sauk Trail Business Park really is kind of the best option moving So hopefully you've had a chance to frequent one of our two facilities. We've been in business for nearly a decade now. We opened our Ellsworth Road location in Pittsfield Township in 2007, so we both looked at each other earlier this week and said, can you believe it's been almost 10 years since we opened that facility? It was our first facility, of course, and started from a zero customer base and is now a very busy location with customers from all over Ann Arbor and the greater Ann Arbor area. You can see, we've put an emphasis on an attractive, aesthetically appealing building, unique architectural features, metal roof, architectural split face block, contrasting trim, extensive landscaping, which we maintain meticulously, and in general, just a professional site with meticulous maintenance overall. In case you're wondering, was this a question when the building, is this a picture from when the building was new or recent? We actually just took this picture last week, so even after a decade of use and customer visits, it still looks like new. So we place a very, very high emphasis on the quality and appearance of the building and meticulously maintain them. In 2012, we opened our Zeeb Road location, so this is just across the street from Meyer, from the new Starbucks also. Nestled in between Burger King and Scioto Town Center, also a dense retail corridor, we were able to enhance the architecture of the building for that location with some additional architectural features, both in terms of the roof as well as the facade, while still maintaining that Zippy theme that we had established with the Ellsworth facility. The overall layout was similar with the building position parallel to the street, again, extensive landscaping, fine eye toward maintenance on an ongoing basis. So, overall, one of our priorities is to maintain the appearance of the buildings so they look like new at all times and are very attractive to customers. So fortunately, over the last decade, we've earned the reputation as the area's highest quality auto wash, and that wasn't just by accident. We feature the industry's most advanced cleaning equipment and solutions, and here you can see a couple snapshots of the inside of our facilities. Very clean, bright, well-lit, very comfortable for customers to patronize and ride through. As a result of that reputation of being the highest quality wash, we're now proud to be the area's most popular auto wash, both with retail as well as commercial customers. We have thousands of loyal customers who patronize our facilities, some traveling as far as, you know, Adrian, Brighton, Chelsea, Plymouth, et cetera. Many of them live elsewhere but choose to wash their vehicles here, spend their money here in the city, and as a result, wash their vehicles here while they're at work, for example. We also maintain partnerships with local new vehicle dealers, some of the dealers along Jackson Road, some along State Street. This works well, customers are referred to us by their new vehicle dealers, and we end up with lifelong customers as a result. We also have a number of vehicle service facilities, including Mercedes-Benz Service Facility that recommends their customers and washes their customers' cars with us, and a number of large fleet operators, including some municipalities, City of Ann Arbor, Pittsfield Township, et cetera, who regularly wash their vehicles with us.
Corey, are you exterior washers only?
It is, that's correct, yeah. It's what we would call an express exterior wash. The customer stays in the car, rides through the facility, very quick and convenient, typically in and out in about three to four minutes, so a very quick, convenient process. It's become part of many of our customers' morning routine on their way to work, or perhaps over lunch, or on their way home from work. Another key priority of ours is to provide outstanding customer service through our professional staff and facilities. And if you've had a chance to visit the sites, you'd see the staff are smartly uniformed, they're very thoroughly trained on customer service, as well as their specific job responsibilities. As you saw before, the buildings and landscaping are meticulously maintained. One of our key customer service features or items is our express pay terminals, so customers are able to pull up to one of the express pay terminals, select their wash package, pay with credit card, gift card, et cetera. Gate goes up and they simply go through the wash at that point, very quick, convenient. Those pay terminals also feature what are called RFID, Remote Frequency Identification Vehicle Readers. We can attach a small RFID tag to a vehicle and identify it instantly, so that if a customer has an unlimited plan, they can simply pass right through the pay terminal and right through the gate. Our unlimited FastPass plan has proven to be very popular. It allows customers simply to wash as often as they want, kind of like a fitness club membership for their car. We also offer a variety of gift prepaid and fleet card services also for other loyal customers. So another key priority of ours is being environmentally responsible or green. So, we have a focus on maximum resource efficiency in all facets of our business, and this is a common question that I get from customers about, is it green to wash your vehicle at a professional car wash? And in fact, it is, and very much so at our washes. We believe it's important to sustain the community in that we operate, and we invest in the most environmentally responsible designs, facility functions, and wash processes. Efficiency, as it turns out, is a win for everybody. Our customers win with the highest quality wash at the lowest possible price. Our community wins with the lowest resource footprint, and we win with a sustainable business model that enables our customers to be both what we call clean and green. And I'll talk a little bit more in detail about that, since it's really a critical part of the business. Like I said, we focused on maximum efficiency in all aspects of the business. Electricity, we've invested in high-efficiency 480-volt three-phase motors for all of our wash equipment. To the best of my knowledge, we're the only all-electric car wash in Michigan. The benefit of electricity is it's very efficient, we can control it with soft starts, variable frequency drives, and these minimize the startup operating and shutdown loads. We feature high-efficiency LED fluorescent metal halide lighting for all the site lighting, as well as photocell controls on all of those. Gas efficiency, also critically important to the business. We've invested in the highest efficiency, what are called condensing hot water heaters. All of our wash water is heated, that's one of the reasons we deliver the highest quality. It's 99.8% efficient, so it's extremely efficient, and we're able to then heat the water to very high temperatures, very effective for cleaning, and do so very cost-effectively. We use high-efficiency radiant floor, overhead heaters, and high-efficiency HVAC systems. Water efficiency is, of course, key to the business, and this is the most frequent question I get, do we reclaim or recycle water? We do, a good deal of it. We have a state-of-the-art, what we call processed water recycling system, uses cyclonic separation and oxygenation, delivers very high-quality water back to the wash that we can use on less critical aspects of the wash process, for example, the underbody or the wheels. We use high-pressure pumping stations and low-pressure rinsing stations that we've taken great care to employ minimum nozzle size that's optimized for function, and therefore, very water-efficient. We have a number of recycling systems also for other processed water on-site, reverse osmosis system, we recycle the reject water from that. We have what's called a processed water-driven self-cleaning facility floor drain system, so the wash water that's actually being used to wash the cars is also cleaning the floor and helping transport the solids out to our sedimentation system. And we have, lastly, what's called a state-of-the-art PLC system, which allows us to measure every vehicle literally by the inch, profile all the equipment, all the solutions onto those vehicles literally by the inch, so that we're not wasting any energy or soaker solutions on anything other than the vehicles. So then, in terms of sewer and solids impact, we have a high-efficiency wastewater management system. This separates all the oil and sediment that comes off the vehicles on-site, and that's integral to the processed water recycling system. We've been a lifetime compliant participant with the Washtenaw County Health Department in their pollution prevention program, and we use an MDEQ licensed solids removal service. So, the sedimentation system that I just described is serviced on a regular basis every other week. That system then allows us to recycle a significant portion of water in the wash process and still maintain the highest quality wash. So, next priority, we're proud to be one of the area's most philanthropic small businesses. Since we opened, we've donated over $200,000 in services to over 100 local charitable organizations. The majority of these receive annual donations from us. We really enjoy this aspect of the business, it's a great way to connect with the community, a great way to help out nonprofit organizations, and it turns out to be quite profitable for those organizations. We typically donate an annual FastPass, which at an auction often brings $400 or $500 for that organization. So the organizations benefit significantly, and we're, you know, hopeful that we generate some additional fans in the process of that. So, just a quick summary of some of the organizations we've donated to, kind of around the periphery organizations outside of Celine that we donate to on a regular basis, and then in the center, organizations within Celine that we donate to also on a regular basis. So, a lot of the schools, Chamber of Commerce, a number of the recreational activities, the fairgrounds, the fiddlers, et cetera. So, quite a few Celine organizations that we're donating to on a regular basis. Proud to be an integral part of the community and really, really enjoy working with those organizations on their fundraisers. So we think the Celine community would benefit from a Zippy Auto Wash, from having a choice in express exterior auto wash services. We're fortunate that we have six auto-friendly banks right now, we have five drive-through restaurants, and a number of auto fueling stations, and a couple of drive-through pharmacies, but we only have one express exterior auto wash. We have attempted for a number of years to purchase that express exterior auto wash but have been unsuccessful in doing so. So we think an additional express exterior auto wash would benefit the community. In addition, it would provide quality employment opportunities, as well as additional property tax and utility service revenues for the Celine community. One question I get frequently from customers is, is this a seasonal business? And in fact, it's not. We're able to have a stable business through the year, which provides us with the opportunity to provide full-time employment to a number of employees. So we typically have between eight to 12 full-time plus part-time employees, and it's not seasonal, we're able to employ gainfully throughout the year. In terms of our contribution, since we've opened, we've paid about $3 million in payroll. The majority of our staff are local city or township residents, so a lot of that money ends up back in the local economy. And we've paid about $1.5 million in property tax and utility service revenues to the two townships, Pittsfield Township and Scioto Township, respectively, since opening. So, with that, that's kind of a brief summary of our priorities. A little bit of background on the business, with that, I'll move on to a proposal for the new Lot 19. So, in your packet on the very last page is a print-off of this slide, and I apologize for the graphic here, but what we attempted to do was overlay the Zippy proposal with the existing Midwestern Consulting slash Junga Ace Hardware Best Western proposal. So, shown in white is the Junga Best Western proposal, shown in black then is the Zippy proposal. So, hopefully, between the screen, the slide here, and your printout, you can get a clear view of it. But essentially, this is a layout very similar to what we have at our Ellsworth Road and Zeeb Road facilities. The building is positioned parallel to the street, just like those facilities, with customers entering off the street, sweeping around toward the rear of the building, entering what we call the queue for the express pay terminals, and then from there, turning and entering the building. In this case, it would be entering the building from the east. I can maybe point at it on the screen here, or here would be better. So, customers coming in off the street, sweeping around the facility, through the pay terminals, and then entering the building from the east side. Exit from the west side, and then they have the opportunity to exit at that point. So it's a very smooth, continuous flow, with essentially only one driveway entrance. It enables us to flow traffic very smoothly, continuously around the site. Virtually all the turns are left-hand turns, so it's very easy for customers to negotiate the turns. It's a proven format, not just with the volume Zippy sites that we have, but with other high-volume express exterior washes throughout the country. In this particular design, our vacuums positioned along the front, in the same way there are at our Zeeb Road facility, that affords customers the opportunity to vacuum either before they go through the wash or after they wash the vehicle. Either one is convenient. Positioning the vacuums in front of the building is nice for customers, they can see and be seen while they're in and out of their car. It's good visibility both to customers as well as the business. And also, the positioning of the building with essentially the windows facing the street provides for an architecturally appealing design. Customers, again, can see and be seen while they're getting their car washed. There's lots of natural light that floods into the building that way, and illuminates the inside of the facility naturally that So these were, the next series of slides were some conceptual renderings that we had developed as part of our latest Pittsfield Township plan. This was actually a proposal that perhaps you had seen online as part of the MLive review. This was proposed for the corner of Michigan and Moon, right across from Briarwood Ford. So we had proposed the corner lot there, and it developed a very detailed proposal with, again, architectural, you know, elements, a very appealing design, extensive landscaping, even what we called kind of a micro park out front. And actually, here, we borrowed a little bit from the Celine, kind of streetscape, so to speak, with the split rail fencing, the stone pillars and such, and a second view of that, I think illuminates that a little bit better. We really wanted it to blend in with the broader Celine corridor, and we would propose something similar for Sauk Trail, or perhaps if there are other architectural elements that council is interested in specifically for this PUD, we could certainly incorporate those. But again, here, you know, key focus on appealing architecture, extensive landscaping, and a real appealing streetscape. Another view from above, where you can see some of the same kind of design elements that we've proposed here on Sauk Trail, and that we have at our Ellsworth Road as well as Zeeb Road locations. The stacking or queuing area is toward the rear of the lot, vehicles entering here, essentially parallel to the road, exiting parallel to the road, et cetera. So very similar designs to our current locations, and very similar to what we were proposing for Sauk Trail. One of the key elements that I'll point out on the design stacking, we get a lot of questions about, how many vehicles can we stack, is it sufficient? This particular design has a very generous stacking, very plentiful stacking, literally double lanes all the way in the entrance driveway, around the side, and all the way up to the gates, at which point it narrows to single lanes. In total, we can stack between 60 and 70 cars on-site with this particular design, which is significantly greater than what we have at Ellsworth currently, as well as greater than what we have at Zeeb. So, given the higher traffic counts on Michigan Avenue, we think the stacking is more than adequate for the expected business. So just a couple of quick bullet points about this design. Again, it's a similar layout, it's a very customer-friendly layout, again, in terms of left-hand turns, vacuums, easy to access, in and out. We do have a separate parking area for customers, if they wish to come in and buy a gift card, buy a FastPass, or any of our other loyalty products, they can simply pull out of line, park, and they can even exit back the opposite direction if necessary. We do an employee parking in the back, so we don't have to worry about employees parking off-site or coming in from other locations. So it's a, very much a standalone, very integrated site, both for staff, customers, and it flows very well. This particular design also features a very generous front yard setback, the one that we had done most recently in Pittsfield Township. They actually require the building up very close to the road as part of their new design standard. But here in Sauk Trail, we have the opportunity to integrate any particular Celine streetscape elements or design elements that planning and council believe are appropriate. Two items I wanted to point out that are important, full curb cut. The Midwestern Consulting plan shows what we would call a three-way curb cut, which would require customers that wish to exit westbound to actually take the exit down off Sauk Trail up Industrial, which as you can imagine, is a significant impediment to getting back out onto Michigan Avenue. We would need a full curb cut here, and I'm optimistic that MDOT would approve one. We've had quite a few exchanges with MDOT as part of our Pittsfield plans. There's a full curb cut here at the manufacturing plant, quite a distance away. There's another full curb cut at Stage Court, also quite a distance away, and there is a full center turn right here, so I'm optimistic that MDOT would at least entertain a full curb cut there. And that would benefit not only Zippy, but all the patrons of the PUD, whether it be the Best Western or Ace, in terms of access. So that's something that we would definitely need. One other item, because it's a very traffic-intensive business, we would request to own, basically construct, own, and maintain this entrance driveway. I have spoken to Jim Junga about that, and he had no issue with that. We would propose a full concrete apron here, something that's essentially lifetime durable, so that there'd be no need for asphalt maintenance or just ongoing maintenance on that entrance. Because of the frequency or volume of customers that enter our site, it's critically important that we have a driveway that lasts a lifetime. So additionally, maintenance of that driveway is paramount to the business. You can imagine if an auto wash had potholes filled with puddles, you would not be likely to patronize the business to get your car washed. So it is very important to us to own and maintain that driveway. We propose doing so with concrete, and like I said, Jim Junga had no issue with that, so. So, on to the letter of intent. There was a copy, I think, that you had received previously. There's also a copy in the deck that we had provided. This was a letter that we had drafted back in August for the proposed purchase of the 4.32 acres of land, Lot 19. So, it's included here for reference, I'll just kind of comment on some of the highlights. So, 4.32 acres was our estimate of what was left over from the expanded Lot 18, Ace Hardware Best Western proposal. The letter of intent was for $550,000, which essentially is a full offer price. The asking price was $125,000 per acre, so it's a full-price offer. We had proposed a six-month due diligence period with two three-month extensions. The six months is what we used or needed to progress through our most recent site plan with Scioto Township, so that went quickly, we were pleased, and we were able to go from purchase agreement to permitting in approximately six months. So we're optimistic that if things moved in a positive direction here, we could also do that in six months. Nevertheless, the LOI did have the option for extensions, we can certainly discuss that further. We're also open to suggestions on how to best integrate, you know, this design with the proposed Lot 18, in terms of design elements, streetscape, et cetera. We would, of course, like to maintain the Zippy scheme or theme that we've developed, both with our Ellsworth and Zeeb locations. We wish it to be consistent with that, with those two sites that we operate currently. But in terms of streetscapes, certainly open to suggestions there, or in terms of driveways, if there are proposals on how to better integrate the two sites in terms of driveway access, et cetera. So, we have maintained a long-term relationship with Vanstone O'Brien and Dave Brewer, Representative from Vanstone O'Brien is here in the audience also for any questions. Vanstone O'Brien is an architectural design-build firm. They are responsible for the design and construction of both of our facilities, and we've had an ongoing relationship with them since day one. We've also had a longstanding relationship with Bank of Ann Arbor in terms of financing, and we're quite confident that we could engineer and finance the project very quickly with both of those groups. So, we're very optimistic about Sauk Trail, and hopeful, you know, that we can have some productive discussion, and hopefully move forward with the letter of intent, and hopefully to a purchase agreement, and ultimately through the planning process. So, we're ready to go, you know, if we could, you know, if we could move forward with this, like I said, six months is a typical timeframe for us to go through the planning and engineering aspects of it, and maybe we could get a shovel in the ground in the spring if all goes well.
Very good. Corey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to take a seat, if that's your inclination.
Sure.
Mr. Caperisi, do you care to make any comment at this time?
Well, only that it was, I thought, a very attractive offer that Corey and his wife Kate board with, with Zippy's Auto Wash, full-price offer, you may ask, you know, comparison to other comparison to other offers. I think this is a result of supply and demand and Zippy's desire to, for a long time, I wanted to break into this Michigan Avenue corridor. I would say also that they have considered for a number of times the Doug Deal property back on Sage Court. I know that question repeatedly comes up. Why a dual-car wash when there's a beautiful building in the back there? And I'll let Corey answer that question. I think he has some good answers on that, but I'm sure that question will pop up. So, I do also know that Jim Junga had also written a letter of recommendation in terms of feeling that there would be a terrific synergy between the car wash business, the Ace Hardware, and the Best Western Hotel development, in that there would be a lot of compatibility in terms of consistency in terms of design and so forth. So, especially considering that Lot 19 is going to be self-occupied, you know, it'll obviously be up to council to determine if this type of high-end car wash service is something that is suitable for the Celine community, supply, you know, the demand for it, and all the other positive things that they bring, being residents here in Conshig and Shus business, so.
Very good. Thank you, Tony. Well, unless there's comments from staff, we will proceed to questions, and Mr. Girba, I don't mean to always put you on the spot, but you're always to my left. So I'm going to start with you. Let's be sure to use the microphone for the audience's benefit, ask as many questions or make any comments that you wish, Mr. Girba. When you're done, we'll transition to Mr. Rhodes, then Mr. Seo, and then work our way around the other side of the table.
Thank you. From my perspective, I think this is a very attractive offer. It's more realistic than what we've received from other offers. I believe this is not only an opportunity, it's not our question to decide whether or not an extra car wash is something that the city can handle or not. I think it's more of a concern of meeting the needs and whatever that are part of the business. As I look at this, the only kind of concern that I kind of have is with that full curb cut and what potentially that could mean in terms of a hazard to traffic. We've had serious accidents and potential deaths of death on Michigan Avenue where bushes, shopping centers. So however that concern is handled, or if there's some attempt to try and realign or for some length that existing entrances into Forcia, that might be a potential interest to our. Honestly, I really don't have any questions. I think you presented a good proposal. The water usage is a great example of benefiting the city, because that is additionally something that, as we see companies that are using water, are losing revenue, and as a result, those costs are being passed on to the citizens, so this would be another option to benefit not only the city, but also to help offload some of the cost to our residents. Thank you.
Corey, do you want to comment on that at all about, you know, if MDOT were not, if MDOT did not grant you the double curb cut that you're looking for, how does that affect your plan and your interest in this parcel?
It's difficult. I do like the idea of potentially looking at the option to connect the two curb cuts with a light. I know there's another light fairly close, but, or maybe even just aligning the two to Forcia's plan specifically. We potentially put the driveway to the other side if that were a concern for MDOT.
Yeah, I think that's the only thing that may hold up is MDOT's potential, because I do know they have been really pushing, and having been on planning commission, the restriction of putting additional curb cuts that are in the Michigan Avenue corridor.
We do look at a full curb cut further down Michigan Avenue corridor, a little bit further east, and we're actually granted a full curb cut not too far to the east, with some provisions for accelerations, decelerations, et cetera, but.
Yeah.
Corey, before I transition to Mr. Rhodes, do you want to comment on, because I've heard this throughout the years from a number of individuals, the aesthetically, or at least it appears to be aesthetically nice, semi-completed abandoned car wash behind tractor supply? Do you want to comment as to why you are not interested in that property?
Sure.
And I would encourage you to use the microphone, just for the audience's benefit. Thank you, Corey.
Sure. We have looked at that site, and two challenges. One, simply proximity to the street. The auto wash business is very much an impulse business, much in the same way that the fast food businesses, for example, and being close to the street, you know, directly visible to customers who are passing is really critical to the business. Additionally, that site is laid out much differently than our existing sites, both in terms of the configuration of the facility as well as the scale of the facility. So as a result of those two factors, proximity to the street as well as configuration, which is essentially set in stone at this point, it's just not a good fit for the Zippy business.
Thank you. Mr. Girba, nothing further?
No.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Potem Rhodes.
Thank you. One of my concerns was the same as Councilmember Girbaux, and that was that full curb cut. You know, the original things that show on the right turn only on the Michigan Avenue, and I had really hoped that you could make that work for you, because I have, like he did, I have a concern about safety and people turning left, and there's certain times of the day where it's going to be almost impossible for someone to make a left-hand turn out of there, and your cars are going to back up, or the customers will then realize they've got to go around the longer way. But obviously, whatever you and MDOT work out with that, I don't know that we would have the right to veto it. The other question that I had was, what are your hours of operation?
Sure. Yeah, we operate from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. every day, except Sunday, we only have one hour later. So, bright and early, so that the customers have an opportunity to wash their vehicles on the way to work, and then also late, so the customers have an opportunity to wash later with the. We've maintained those hours actually since day one for almost 10 years now.
Okay, thank you. That's the extent of my comments.
Very good. Councilmember Seo.
Thank you. I noticed in your letter of intent, and I don't know whether it's a typo or not, but in the first paragraph, second sentence, it says, "Zippy Auto Wash, only owned by Corey and Michelle Weaver, will lease the property for the operation of a Zippy Auto Wash facility." Is that simply a typo?
So we have a real estate holding entity and an operating entity, so they're both fully owned by us.
Very good. That's the only question I have.
Only question, Mr. Seo? Great. Ms. McClellan, would you give the hand, make sure the microphone gets to Councilwoman Dillon, and Councilwoman Dillon, the floor is yours.
Well, a couple of my questions have already been asked and answered, so I will just move on. What is your height of your building? Is it a two-story building?
It's a single-story building, 12-foot plus then a gabled roof. Correct, yeah, so.
And what type of signage are you looking for?
We would certainly work within the existing sign ordinance. We were fortunate that both the sign ordinances in SIO and Pittsfield Township were identical, so we were able to utilize the exact same sign there, but certainly we can work with whatever the signage ordinance is.
And are there multiple car washes near your other locations?
There are, within several miles of each of our other locations.
So this would be the closest proximity to another car wash, this location?
Actually, we have one that's closer at Zeeb Road.
And just for clarification, how many cars did you say for stacking?
This particular site enables between 60 and 70 cars of stacking.
Six-zero?
Six-zero, yeah. It's quite significant, because we have the opportunity to double-stack all the way out through that driveway along the front, whereas our Ellsworth facility is not that large.
And do you have any intention of making a rear exit?
The Junga Site Plan, Junga/Fast Western Site Plan, does show a rear exit, I guess you'd call it, on the southeastern corner. So potentially, I mean, customers could use that exit onto Industrial Drive at Lot 22 here. So the common driveway, so to speak, you know, comes down through here, and then there's an exit onto the existing paved section of Sauk Trail Drive. I don't believe this section is finished currently, and I don't think this proposal included finishing that, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McClellan?
Yeah, just a quick question about the market. I guess, and it kind of goes to Dean's comment, it's really not our business, that's your business to know, but my concern is, you know, whether the market can hold two car washes and whether by you guys coming, one would be out of business, and then we have an empty spot somewhere else, with just an empty building sitting there. So, does the market, your research, show that it would hold to have two?
Definitely. In fact, it's kind of a follow-on question. We have other auto washes operating in the near vicinity of our existing ones that continue to operate.
Okay.
So, for example, along Michigan Avenue, I think the traffic count was 30,000 cars per day. Typical auto wash might service several hundred, so there's still, you know, 29,000 other vehicles.
Gotcha. All right. And then, what is your, I mean, is the plan stay the same if the hotel and the hardware store doesn't ever come to fruition? Is that still?
They do, and I probably failed to point that one bullet point out in one of the slides, but yeah, we can develop independent, so for example, if the timelines of the two do not line up, we can still develop, in fact, that was one of the reasons for proposing the driveway ownership, Zippy driveway ownership, so that we can establish that primary drive, own it and maintain it long-term. We could also shift either to the east or the west, depending on the development of this PUD. If there's a desire for us to move to Lot 20, we could potentially do that, or vice versa. If Lot 18 is developed in a different manner or not developed at all, we could shift. We need about 300 feet of frontage to develop the business, but we could also maintain a standalone curb cut if that's necessary.
Okay. I think that was it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tarr.
Thank you. I've been, since I was fortunate enough to hear the first presentation about this, I've been thinking about this since, and I want to say I have driven past your other two facilities, and they are exactly as you described them, and I think there's a lot to like about this proposal, including a really high-quality facility. I had a number of questions, all of which have been asked. Just to expand a little bit about Lot, I noticed that you had mentioned Lot 20 in the presentation. Do you see, if you, if MDOT failed to grant a double entry driveway, is there a possibility to still accommodate that requirement or lack of permission from MDOT in Lot 20 using the Oaks parking?
Oh, that's a good question, right? Connecting to the Oaks parking lot behind Charles Reinhardt.
Yeah.
Potentially, yeah. The Oaks parking is well-designed in that it services or leads out to the Wendy's traffic in front of the plant, so potentially. I was also looking at that, thinking that also would line us up with the driveway from the manufacturing plant directly across the street, potentially.
Have you looked at Lot 20 in detail at all?
We did previously, I'm sorry.
Or just kind of, potentially, okay, we could move if this didn't work out?
We did a few years ago. It was something you were considering, and then, you know, kind of moved up Michigan Avenue a little bit further. And then when this came up with the hotel, and you saw this as another opportunity to revisit Sauk Trail, so. And I think we're, you know, we're very interested in this section of Michigan Avenue, so, and we've talked about, you know, it was pretty flexible, so, yeah, we would definitely entertain that again as well.
One of the considerations on 20 is the current frontage isn't quite 300 feet, I don't believe, so perhaps there's an opportunity to have a new Lot 19 with a little bit more frontage for.
New Lot 20.
Excuse me, new Lot 20 with a little bit more frontage.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I would just also comment, I appreciated the attention you paid to the aesthetics of this as the entry point into the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tarr. Any other questions? Let's go to Mr. Seo and then back to Mr. Girbaugh.
One quick one, and I know it's an amenity that's addressed usually in the site plan review by planning. Would you folks be amenable to putting a sidewalk along the Michigan Avenue side? The reason I ask is there's already a desire path there. If your piece develops first, there'd kind of be a sidewalk in the middle with no connection on either end, but maybe as a deferred requirement for later, should that whole thing develop.
Sure. Considerably. We have sidewalks at our current locations.
Good, thank you.
Let me get Mr. Girbaugh, and I'll come back to you, Ms. Tarr, and then Mr. Rhodes.
Mr. Seo, I think that usually has been a requirement of planning when we do these developments at this point, that somehow we put that into these types of properties, even as a PUD, I think that would be probably a requirement, but.
You do this make a.
Yep.
Okay.
Because the idea was that we were always going to have sidewalks on both sides, we just haven't managed to get them in. My question was, if this maybe is for Mr. Campbell.
Sure.
Where the court that is not in there at this current point, where is actually the property line end for this sale? The 4.32 acres, is that include or exclude the court that was?
Under the base.
Okay.
How it's rendered up there?
Yeah, we based, this was the original delineation between 18 and 19, and our 4.32-acre calculation was based on this white line that New Western was insulting, yeah.
No, I'm just saying that potentially the opportunity of developing the rest of that component, as we was talking, if the road isn't going to be finished, how we would deal with, I don't want to create some kind of little landlocked piece of property, but just a question for us in our planning.
Ms. Tarr, and then Mayor Potem Rhodes.
Yeah, one thing I forgot to ask about, because I didn't write it down. One of the issues with Lots 18 and part of 19 is the utility line relocation. Is that a critical factor for you as well?
Please not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rhodes.
I had in prior to your presentation, been concerned about the possibility of timing between your development and the adjacent one, but I understand that's one of the reasons for asking for the full curb cut, because you're, then we'll be independent of what happens with the other one. It also appears that your project, if it's approved, would come out of the ground first, which throws more of a concern over to the other development about doing a design that's compatible with yours. So it sort of shifts it from what, at least I had previously thought. Okay, that's it.
Any other questions from council? No, any comments from staff? Well, let me say this. First of all, appreciate your time again this evening, and more importantly, we appreciate your interest in Lot 19 in the Sauk Trail Business Park. As I said to both of you when we met several weeks ago, I am happy to acknowledge that I am a proud Zippy customer, have been for a number of years. The facilities are aesthetically very attractive. You do an excellent job. The staff is always courteous and professional, and I'll be candid with you, your facility on Ellsworth, Ellsworth, which is the one I patronize, allows me to get my car washed and then go to Platt and Packard and go to White Castle, so it's a real, I kill two birds with one stone. But, first of all, your presentation this evening was very thorough. I think you did an excellent job addressing council's concerns. I hope that your schedules permit you to come back on the 3rd of October. It would be added towards the end of the regular meeting agenda as a discussion item. I'm hoping to develop consensus at that time. I would echo the comments of my colleagues, in many ways, this is a very attractive proposal by a great business, but the added leverage that we have, being owners of these parcels, is we get to be really thoughtful about what we want in that particular space, and whether it's compatible with a number of goals and objectives we have as a community. So, what I would request of my colleagues is, if you do have questions, concerns, issues regarding this proposal between now and October 3rd, please relay those to City Manager Campbell, and again, I will be looking for consensus on how best to move forward at our next council meeting on October the 3rd. We all good with that? Mayor Potem Rhodes?
Just thought of one thing when you were up there pointing out where your boundaries were. If you put that driveway in, then you're putting that improvement on the adjacent property owner's land.
Or potentially, we could redefine Lot 19. It's already proposed to be redefined. We could certainly carve out a portion of the front there, which would be part of Lot 19, own and maintain.
Okay.
And maybe with that easement, of course.
Right.
Access.
All right. If we're all good, again, appreciate your time this evening very much. We look forward to seeing you again on the 3rd. We'll proceed to public comments on this agenda item. So if anyone wishes to make a comment on the potential sale of Lot 19 to Zippy's Car Wash, we welcome your public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Please. Thanks for coming to the mic, John.
John Olson, Celine Area Chamber of Commerce. I just, first off, I want to say how great it is to have so many desirable companies that want to locate in Celine. It's a great problem to have. I've known Zippy both as a customer, it's the only place my wife goes to over the years, and I've also known them through the chamber. I know them to be a very professional operation and a good corporate citizen, and, you know, I see a great symbiotic relationship. I see a great symbiotic relationship if we can get through to the hotel of, you know, people coming to weddings and wanting to get their car cleaned, or businesses coming in, and they're going to a meeting and want to spruce up the car before they go. I see a real great relationship between all these, so hopefully we can move ahead with it.
Great. Thank you, John. Are there additional citizen comments? Please, Mrs. Hess.
My one concern is, we have, of course, an empty, an old car wash that didn't happen. We also have a hole in the ground where a plan didn't happen, and I'm wondering at what point can we do a security bond, that if it shouldn't happen, that we don't have another hole in the ground? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Any additional citizen comments? No, then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this work meeting at, let's say, 7:23 p.m. So moved? Moved by Girbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Secured by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.